All right, everybody. Welcome to the October 19th regular session meeting of Jersey Village City Council. Thanks for logging in and joining us remotely if you're watching on YouTube. I'm gonna get started and dive right into item A called call me in order announce a quorum as president. Madam Secretary, a quorum is present?
Yes.
I move into item B invocation and pledge of allegiance by James Singleton, council member. Go ahead, James.
Okay. Let's bow our heads and pray. We're thank you for our time together, bringing us all safely here as we go through this meeting, give us wisdom and knowledge and open ears to each other and to the public to understand the best choices and the best decisions to lead our city. Pray for everyone's safety and your will be done through the rest of the meeting in your name. Amen. Right. And for the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you, James. Move into item C citizen comments. Citizens that have signed a card and wish to speak to city council will be heard at this time in compliance with Texas meetings act unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda. The city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to council. Tonight I have two comment, two commenters. First is Michael Stenbridge.
Yes, hello.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We would just like to, my wife and I would like to voice our opposition again to the the tier zone three idea. We just, you know, it's not funny. I'm really serious that we can't afford higher valuations. I will give you this, that, that, you know, Austin and the attorney, I'm sure they were trying to do everything they possibly could. I was much angrier earlier at the last meeting and I apologize for that if I got rude. This is thinking outside the box. The residential tiers, I was just looking over the agenda. I know you do have some constituents like Mark Malloy and some other people. We do actually read the agenda. I've started to take up the habit. It's suggested. In this tiers, you know, there's two types. There's the bit, there's the small residential and business type. And then there's the full, full on residential type where you're just going to tackle it and say, okay, we're just going to do houses. But looking at the increment axiom or philosophy, I have a contrarian view on this, even though granted, I'm totally against this. Okay. I'm not going to budge on that. But the, the business one, I believe that Austin or possibly the Mr. Basford came up with would, I think, would get a lot more increment, a lot more money. I don't see how the residential one, unless you're building like celebrity houses, I don't see how the residential one would make any increment. Or my question is, would this increment come off the backs of us? Would it, would it somehow unduly burden the residential people that stay? And if you have the, the, the 30% one that doesn't require petition, is that somehow going to do things for people within the zone like flood mitigation or something? Or let's say you wanted to throw out an elevations lottery, you know, four, eight houses a year or something like that. So we could be up to speed with West Jersey. But I really have this issue with four years and, and no elevations for East Jersey and everything. And it's so tough to talk to FEMA and it's a hassle. And, you know, when you're pulling down a couple hundred thousand a year, you know, I don't know, I could be wrong. I don't know. I don't have the information. I don't know how difficult it is to deal with FEMA. I haven't been doing it. So I may not know what I'm talking about and I may be out of line there, but we oppose this. I want to re-express my wife and I's opposition to this because the increment looks like a roller coaster. You know, like Texas, whatever it was, roller coaster to Astor, we're going up the hill. And then, you know, when is it going to expire? Do we even want it to expire so people can have the possibility of future buyouts like councilman Singleton was trying to logic, you know, that people would want that. But we, we're not in a position to move. We don't have the money. We don't, we can't afford it for a comparable town like Jersey Village. And, and the taxes are scary with, with the insurance costs, the taxes. And we try to keep the taxes down. You know, I know I had a little disagreement with somebody about that. I won't say who, but all y'all know, y'all protest your stuff. Y'all want your stuff down. You know, I don't care what party you are. Everybody wants that. And so the tiers directly goes in opposition like a football tackle to that, trying to accomplish that goal. Yes, we want flood mitigation. We'd love to have an elevation. We'd love our neighbors to have elevations. But that's the FEMA route. And I know that people are trying to think outside the box. I apologize. You know, if I, if I was brusque last time, last council meeting, I mean, but we just don't want this. We don't want this. And, and, and people should be able to sell on the free market. If they go into a tiers, do you have to disclose that if you want to do a free market sale? And you have to, it's the one thing you have to say, well, there's a flood house. You disclose it. Okay. Okay. And then they can buy if they like the neighborhood. But if you have to disclose being in a tiers, how does that affect a pure market sale with a Realtor? And then people need to know that they can, and I know y'all oppose this and I know why, because you're trying to keep the city solvent. I understand the opposition contraview here, but people can get a county buy. If somebody, I just have to have a buyout, not us, but if somebody else, a neighbor, you know, they had to have a buyout, they could get a county buyout. It's doable. Now, it might go in direct opposition to your city axiom and your city philosophy of trying to retain tax base. But, you know, I tried to read this, this packet and that's suggestible when you're talking about something to the city council. And I read the short agenda and then I read, got in the 200 page one and that chart with the increment, that is our main opposition. We are so scared that, you know, the valuations, like it could add to the land with big new expensive houses and stuff like that. And then you have to look at, well, would the businesses help to somehow help out the homes? Or, or are you better off in a 30% one or a residential? And we, we just don't like it. And I'm, I'm going to shut up now, but you know how I feel. I've expressed it to y'all. You know how my wife and I, we just can't have any more taxes. We already have the flooding problem and, and the expenses of all our bills. And, and I know that some people have money, but that's not us. And, and I don't think it's laughable. I'm not trying to get in a fight here, but we just can't afford it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Next person I have is Mark Malloy.
Can you hear me? Mark Malloy, 7803 Hamilton Circle, past city council member of the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens comments for the 1019 2020 city council meeting. Please make my verbal comments and written documents given to the city secretary a permanent record of the meeting. I'm speaking tonight to talk about the city charter. I want to say that the city council and mayor positions should remain the way they are and not be changed. The mayor position should be a two-year term with a term limit of six years. The council position should remain two-year term with a term limit of eight years. I think that fill-in appointment position should not be decided by the city council for the mayor or city council positions. I believe that the individual that ran in the most recent election for the now vacated council or mayor position should be given the ability to take on the position for the remainder of the term. I want to say that the elected officials should not get any compensation for their deciding to take on the elected government position, be it the mayor or council position. None of the previous elected officials felt that they should be compensated. Why should current city council persons or the mayor think they should be any different? There should be no lengthening of terms. The citizens should be able to have the opportunity to replace the mayor and city council persons on a staggered two-year cycle. I want to say that I think that the election of council person should be changed from the current at-large election process to the district area representative, representative election process. The citizens should have council persons in their districted mapped area representing them. I personally have had problems with the at-large council not wanting to address and work to resolve citizen community problems. I personally have dealt with the at-large city council type of governance in my area of town, not addressing an issue for the citizenry. And I had to go house to house to get a petition signed by homeowners in my area and present it to the city government to cause them to work for the people that live in the area. I had one previous city council person tell me, Mr. Malloy, you knew about the issue before you moved into that area of the city. Is that the attitude representing the citizens fairly? The city of Jersey Village, Texas city charter needs to be changed to allow the taxpayers to vote during a city election to make the decision on if the city government is going to be allowed to spend many, many millions of dollars on city government wanted, but not essential citizen need, needed projects. Examples of this would be a new five to seven million dollar golf course clubhouse and convention center. Currently, the city government has accumulated per them 17.5 million dollars to do city government wanted projects. And because of that, they have stockpiled the money. So basically, a current city councilman has stated several times recently that the way the city charter is written currently eliminates the taxpayer's ability to be given the opportunity to vote during a regular election or special election to make the decision if their city government should be able to spend many, many millions of dollars of city revenue on city government wants that are not an essential need of the citizens. The city councilman is saying the only way the citizens taxpayers would be able to vote would be if the city government had to take on debt such as utilizing a bond referendum to place the citizens taxpayers in debt to pay for the city governments wants. The current wording of the Jersey Village city charter should be changed to say the citizens taxpayers will be allowed to vote during a regular or special election, no matter if the city has the funds on hand or if they have to in-depth the citizen taxpayers through the use of certificates of obligation or through bond referendums to fund, build non-essential citizen, non-needed multimillion dollar projects. Thank you. That's all I had to say tonight.
Any more? All right. We move on to IMD city manager report. Austin, want to give us a general rundown of anything that needs to be addressed?
Yeah, Mayor, Counselors, thank you. Just want to point out the employee of the month Lieutenant Danny, Danny Keel. Lieutenant Keel's been a great resource to the department, helping redo all of the policy and procedure manuals, which is pretty dry work, but he took that on right into it. He's been a great asset to the.
You got Austin, I'm muted, Austin.
All right. Thank you. He, he also took on the big role of videos, which the same day that they were able to do that, they were able to get on assist with Harris County. So Danny Keel, our lieutenant is our October 2020 employee of the month. He's passionate about training and improving our agency as we move forward. And this is just one of the, or just a couple of the things he volunteers for steps up to take on. And we're very excited. If there's any other questions, anything else in the city manager report, I'm happy to answer that.
Austin. I was wondering if we could look at the monthly activity report for the police department?
Yeah.
I've just, I'm looking at the data and it's just an anomaly popped out at me. And I just feel like it's always good to ask questions about anomalies and data. But if you look at the dispatch calls for service and traffic stops, the difference between year to date 2020 and 2019. It's quite a bit of difference there. And I was just wondering what, what was the, would be the explanation for that?
Isn't that COVID?
On page 95.
I don't have a page number. It's one of one on my screen.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, can, can you hear me? I'm unable to get into tonight. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. When we changed the, the way they were calculating calls for service was different. They actually had traffic as a call for service, which in police work, that isn't a call for service, the way that we look at it. Call for service, somebody calling in either a 911 call or needing assistance or report. So these numbers are reflective of that. So to go back and look at the numbers for 2019, I think we're going to have to look at numbers for two years to get real solid numbers. Cause the way they were being calculated before, I believe we can do it a little bit more accurate way. So that's what we're doing currently are our numbers of calls for service you see. Those are the calls that we respond to. Traffic is separate from that, but we kept that in there just to give you an idea of, you know, how many stops we make and to show that breakdown, because it'd even look even more off if we hadn't put that in, I think. But I hope that answers your question, councilman.
Well, yeah, it helps. The, right above it is the total arrests. And I noticed there's a big difference there too. I just, all I'm doing is calling this to y'all's attention. So you can investigate it or try to figure it out. I don't have an issue with it.
Are you asking about the 40% shortage? Like the fact that this year's numbers are almost 40% lower than last year?
I don't know if it's a shortage or not, but I'm, I'm calling out a discrepancy there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the discrepancy you're seeing. That's all.
Yeah, I think that's in line with what Chief Riggs had just mentioned there.
Yeah. Right. And on the arrest, as we all know, we've been dealing with COVID. Our jail is still not open. So you're going to see, you know, where somebody could be released or a different way of taking action, whether filed at large or something like that. So that would be the other reason that those numbers could be a little lower.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Any other questions?
Yeah. And just to be clear, Chief is on the year to date where it says year to date 2019, is that 2019 from January through September? Or is that all of 2019?
That, that just, and I'm glad you, that's going to be all of 2019. So we still have October, November, December. So those numbers, you know, if you look at it, say we do a thousand or just stay at 800 a month, you're going to add another 2,400 calls. That's still lower. But like I said, the way it was calculated before, I'm not real confident about those numbers, to be honest with you in 2019. And there's some things that we're working through in dispatch and in records that we're having to, to look at to, to get a more accurate depiction of what, what we really have.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions about the city manager report? All right. Going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a council member would like to see moved to the regular agenda? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move. We approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. Gary with the motion, Bobby Warren with the second. A motion is second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? Move into the regular session. Item F1, consider resolution number 2020 dash 48, accepting the report and recommendation of the 2020 Charter Review Commission. Sherry Shepherd, chairperson of the 2020 Charter Review Commission. Good evening, Sherry.
Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me time this evening. I wanted, I'm here as a representative of the 2020 Charter Review Commission. I would like to thank all of our commissioners that took place in the review this year. I thank you for committing your time and efforts in doing that. You know, we took a number of steps in reviewing the charter this year. We, we sat as a group and reviewed the charter section by section and considered areas for amendment. We had help with, from Scott Bounds as we walked through and asked questions. We received input from the city staff on how departments operate under the existing charter. There were no recommendations for amendments coming from that discussion. We also received input from city council on how well the city is operating under the charter. There were a number of, of suggests, suggestions from council members that we took under consideration as we were developing this report. And then lastly, we conducted a public hearing to receive a citizen's comments to this, for amendments to the city charter. And we had one citizen, Mark Malloy, who, who offered comments for that. So I am here tonight to provide the report to you. I'm happy to answer any questions or to walk through any of the, the recommendations that we are putting forth.
Thank you, Sherry. Any council members have questions for Sherry?
Yeah, let me, let me start by, thank you, Sherry, for, for participating in this process. So the recommendations, this probably goes to legal counsel, the recommendations that you're making comes to counsel. And we discussed, and I believe there's one more public hearing. If, what's the process? What's the process moving forward with these recommendations?
So what you're going to do is, I mean, the council can accept this by your own, by your own charter, current charter, accept them. And then this will be put forward to election to the citizens. And so, well, I mean, we don't have that timeline set now, but essentially, essentially the next election, we can have this ready to go. And there's a couple of steps in between there that we'll need to do. But if this is something that the council wants to accept tonight, then that's, that's the process we'll take moving forward.
Okay. So the ultimate, so the council decides what to put in the election, then the citizens decide what to approve or disapprove.
Right. So I mean, and the way, the way your system set, is set up, the charter review committee does, does exactly what they're doing now. So they present this to you, you accept it and then, and then that will be, I think, we'll take the steps moving forward to put on the next, the next election.
Okay. Okay. I, I have some specific things, but I, but I'll let other council members go first if there's any generic type questions.
Okay. Any, any other council members have questions, comments?
Sherry, the only thing I was going to mention, and I, I don't know if Greg was waiting, if, if you were looking for more generic comments than this, but I'll go ahead and just start off with, I, I think the one that probably is going to raise the most questions or would, would need a, maybe a little bit more background. I know that during our joint session between council and the Charter Review Commission, we discussed some of the difficulties with the way the term limit section was phrased and how because of the way that a, that a partial term of office, if someone came in and was appointed either in the middle of a term or if someone ran for another office on council, leaving a, an expired term, that sometimes that created some odd situations with, with how the terms were counted. And I assume that that, that discussion kind of resulted in this suggestion before us where it says, where the suggested language would, would actually change it so that a partial, like certain part of a term would not count towards the term limit count. But there's an additional provision that says, no mayor or council member may qualify as a candidate for another municipal office if the term or any part thereof runs concurrently with each, unless the person, one, files in writing the intent to run for the office with the city secretary at least 60 days prior to the filing deadline for office and two resigns from the municipal office the person presently holds. Can you kind of just give us a little bit of background on the charter commission's kind of thought process and how that was formulated?
Sure. So talking from a term limit standpoint, we all agreed that the term limits as they're set today should hold. So the two-year term limits. We've had situations here recently in the, in the, the recent years where we've had appointments. And so we've had individuals stepping into a partial term. And a perfect example is Andrew. So the way that the, the charter was written because of the combination of the terms as council member and, you know, stepping into, to mayor, that one year serving in the empty position now hinders, you know, him from serving a two-year term as mayor. So as the council or the commission felt that serving that partial year shouldn't count as, you know, with, in the calculation associated with the term limits. Now, the, the other phrase in there about the, you know, holding the, another municipal concurrently, office concurrently, I can't get that out, was basically to put, you know, how we have staggered elections was to put both of those cycles on equal footing. So for example, if you're in the cycle where the two council members and the mayor is up for election and that one of those council members decides to run for mayor, if they are not elected, then technically they can still hold their council position. Whereas if you're in the other cycle where the three council members are up for election, you don't have that same luxury. And so we wanted to, to put a clause in there that would put, put both of the cycles on either footing for if a council member decides to run for mayor election.
I know you said the, the, the three council members who run at the same time in even numbered years. I think it may be, it's in reverse. If I'm understanding correctly, the idea is if someone, yeah, that if, like, for example, if, if someone who runs an even numbered years decides to run for mayor and they lose, they can still remain because they still have another year remaining on their term. Whereas if someone is on the same cycle with the mayor and they run, it's not like they can be on the ballot twice. They, they have to choose one race. And if they lose, they're, they're out. So that, I, I, yeah. I, I wasn't sure if that had anything to do with that, or if it was more about trying to give people kind of a heads up if, if someone's going to vacate a, a position to run for another office to give. Because I know there had been situations where people have criticized in the past the fact that a, a sitting council member runs, say, for example, for mayor on an opposite cycle and quietly files, you know, not that they're trying to avoid, you know, giving a heads up that they're filing for a different office. But then if no one runs for, you know, I, I guess, I guess kind of the argument that you want to try to make it as open and an opportunity for people to run in a open position as possible. The only thing I would be concerned about would be a question of, and I'll have to go back and look at the charter. I know the charter says that if, if a vacancy happens within a certain amount of time before an election that, that it has to be put on the ballot. I wonder if this creates the effect of that vacated position now being an additional office that is on the ballot. If so, that's not necessarily a bad thing. Frankly, I like the idea of citizens having a, having a say rather than council having a say if it's a situation where we can put it on the ballot. I know the charter was meant for, the appointment process was meant when maybe you have an unexpected resignation. Someone moves or whatever happens and they just can't serve anymore. Obviously you can't necessarily wait until the next election in some instances. But I think if you put this into place, you actually can put that, that seat on the ballot because it is 60 days before the filing deadline. So.
And that's, that's, that was the spirit of it.
Yeah. Okay. And that makes perfect sense.
I, I, my thought on that is, I'm really not in favor of it. It, it, in my opinion, it creates, it creates a situation where you could have a qualified and competent person on the city council that is qualified to move into a mayor's position, but chooses not to because of the election process, but having to resign. So it's kind of a all or nothing type deal where staying on council would, would actually be, if they did not, when staying on council would still be a benefit. I think that would deter people from running, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Greg. We, we already have a shortage of people willing to run. And for what I am understanding here is if a candidate midterm decides to run for mayor, have to resign from their council position in November, run for election and be reelected in May, which leaves council with only four councilmen and a mayor for almost six months out of the year.
But, but Lori and Justin helped me out. They would, in that situation, they still sit in that seat until they're replaced. Is that not how that works?
There was discussion, if you recall, right toward the end of the, the last meeting where Scott had mentioned that he wanted to do a little bit more research about putting a qualifier in there that while they must give notice 60 days prior, the actual. that while they must give notice 60 days prior, the actual resignation would not take place until after the term ended or to, after the election. And he then decided that we would just leave it as it is, the way it was submitted.
I think the one key here is, I don't know that it would be November, Lori, correct me, or, or Justin, either one, correct me if I'm wrong, but technically you must qualify, what, I guess I should ask the question, when, when does someone have to qualify to be a candidate? What, what's the, is it by the filing deadline they have to qualify? So like, let's say I, the charter says you have to live in Jersey Village for a year before running for council. As long as by the filing deadline, if, if, if someone had lived in Jersey Village for one year exactly on the date of the filing deadline, they would then qualify to run for office, correct?
Right.
Okay, so I think what that means then is this creates a requirement that you do have to file the notice of intent to run 60 days prior, but then you don't have to resign until the actual filing deadline. So it would put their resignation in February, so they'd be without, uh, how many days is the filing deadline before election day, like?
It like ends like February 14-ish, somewhere around in there.
So you're talking about three months roughly?
It gives a lot of negative unintended consequences then. You're still looking at three months.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, I think the concept is a deterrent to get to, for people to, from council to mayor. Uh, especially if, if you have a good council person and they would serve better as mayor, but have to resign their position and then defeat it for whatever reason. I, I, I'm, I'm just not, I, personally, I don't like that concept. I'm, I'm okay with the, the person being appointed not counting towards term limits because the election process is that, if they're doing a good job, they'll be elected. If they're not, they will not be elected. I agree with that, but I, I, I disagree with that concept of resignation, uh, running for mayor if, if under those circumstances.
Sherri, is there, um, did, did your committee or Scott or Lori, is there an example in the state of Texas of some, a similar, similar charter? Just so.
I, I, I believe that when Scott put his research together, he looked at other charters and he came up with suggestions for the commission to review. And, and this was one of the things that he found in other areas and other cities.
Justin, once you tender, tender resignation, there's no going back on, right? Because there's then been an election.
Right, I mean, typically, again, this is, this is Scott's recommendation to the, to the, to the commission. And so, and I don't know what other ordinances or charters he was looking at, but, um, but Councilman Singleton, yes. Generally, in the, in the, in the normal context of, um, if you're, if you're gonna vacate a seat to fill another seat, it's, it's a done deal when you, you know, when, when you leave. So, I mean, if, if there's, if there was talk, or even Scott was mentioning that we need to do some qualifying language, if that's causing this kind of confusion, that could be something we need to look at. But, you know, but enough, somebody, somebody's question, I'm not sure that, that, that I've seen this, this particular kind of language in a charter. Again, it doesn't mean it's wrong, it's just I, it's not one I've seen it. If Scott has found it in a couple of other places, then, I mean, it's, it's apparently practiced in other cities too.
I would say this, I, I don't have a huge issue with the resignation and having another race in order to allow the voters to fill the seat instead of an appointment that happens in July. My concern is the vacancy it would create, but I think that this language could be adjusted to allow that resignation to be tendered in June or January or before the filing deadline effective in the May meeting, you know, set a date so that it can be effective at the end of the term, allowing that candidate to continue to serve and step down once they are elected or not to the other position.
Yeah, I, I think if the intent, James, to, to piggyback on that, if the intent is to put them on the same, the people in one, three and five, that the same platform as two and four, and when you run for election of mayor, you can't run concurrently for council, so you can only, your term ends, you know, if you choose, as council member, it ends at that point. Then I would think that the end of term, your resignation would be effective beginning of the next council term, so in May sometime. But that's my interpretation.
Hopefully you made bet on your political equity, but every race we run is on that, so hopefully you did the, made the right decision.
Yeah.
I, I think that was the spirit of what we were trying to get to, was that whoever was resigning their position to run for another position would maintain that seat until such time the, you know, they, the election had happened and someone had replaced him. But if we need to clarify language, then by all means, let's clarify the language.
Definitely need to clarify it before it's voted on.
Well, let me, let me ask you, I'm adamantly opposed to it. I don't like that concept. I understand the meaning behind it, but I also understand the necessity to have good people running for council and that if you have good people, you want to retain them as long as possible. My question is, how many other council members are, are in favor of even working on it? I'm, I'm an absolute no. So.
My, my concern is, I, I get the spirit behind it and it's a little intention, but yeah, it's very different if there, if we, if people were knocking down the door to run for offices and we're having an issue of people not wanting to step up, we're not, we're, we're having issues of uncontested races and, uh, and, you know, it'd be different if we had challenged races every single year, but that's not the case. And so I, I, my biggest concern is, yeah, I think the highest priority is to have good people on council and good people running for mayor and good people. You try to retain that, and so at, at the current, you know, at, at the current moment, this would seem to go against that goal. If it was a different, different time, different, uh, priority or different, uh, if we had more people that were stepping up to run, then that, I would feel much more comfortable, but that's, you know, I'm not a vote, but that's my thought.
I will say, I, I totally agree that we do need to be careful about discouraging people from running for office, but, but I do also think that that's largely a recent phenomenon, I mean, for the most part, a, a recent phenomenon. You know, we've had, I know this, this last year, we had, we didn't have any contested elections and the two before that, there were only one race each on the ballot. But in 2016, you had a full, a very full ballot, uh, and, and I, I, I would, I think if we can address the concerns about having that three-month gap, if it can be done in a way that's compliant with state law and is clear, uh, that the person gets to finish out, uh, at least, you know, until their success, you know, basically that they're prohibited from continuing their term and that, or something along those lines where, where there's an actual, um, you know, allows them to continue to serve out the, that remainder of time, and then allows whoever is elected on the ballot to, to, to actually serve that position, uh, whether the person wins or not. I, I think as long as we can address those issues that, that Drew and, and James raised, I'm, I'm, I would be in favor of, of moving forward with working on that.
I agree with Bobby. I'd like to empower the voter if possible. I just have some concerns that we can clarify.
Yeah, that's why I said if we can, if, if, if there's no good way to do it either, because, you know, my concern would be right now, Texas election law is so Byzantine that there, there may be something that we're not quite, haven't put our thumb on yet, that, that might be a prohibitive factor here, so, um, you know, I, I think it's worth at least looking at. If we can eliminate the three-month gap, then I think it's, I think it's worth looking at more closely.
All right, so two council members who are in favor of, I guess, sort of our city, city attorney looking into, um, adding language that would allow the gap to be filled, uh, so that person who does file can, can serve out their remainder of their term. Drew, Gary, what, what are your, um, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I'm not real clear on what you just said, but if, what I'm in favor of is what Greg was arguing for.
Okay, so two, Drew, you're gonna be our tiebreaker here, whether it goes to you.
I, I don't necessarily see it a, I like the intent of, uh, the equal footing, um, and I know that, that we have a problem right now finding, finding, you know, strong quality people willing, willing to, to run and, uh, this, this, but at the end of the day, it, we, we've all commented that we'd like more citizen participation and either as voting or, uh, getting people involved to run, so I think, you know, opening things up might do that. But with the idea that this second clause gets defined a lot more and says, when do they have to resign? If it's, if it's immediately upon the 60-day notice, then by state law or, or some loophole in state law, then, then I'm not for it.
Okay, so that sounds like we have a majority of council members wanting it, wanting it to at least be looked at and see if there's any, any clarifying language that can help, uh, that second clause of filling in the gap. So, uh, that's been recorded and, um, our city attorney has heard us, so we'll have to address that going forward, um, and see if we want to put that on the, on the, uh, on the ballot in a certain way. Um, Justin, is there, is that, uh, do you need anything else from us on that, or are we, are you using it clear?
Well, a, a couple of things that, uh, the first question is related to Lori. So, um, you know, I'm looking at your charter now and it says the action by the council for this type, even this, this particular item, the action is the council shall receive and publish any report presented by the commission. So Lori, in this situation, you know, you, we have, we do have a report that's been received and published by the, well, it's been received by the council from the commission. In the past, have you waited until council has approved it or any council, or any, you know, any report presented to the, to the council has been published?
So the way I, I have reviewed in the past, the way the things were done is that the report as received is published. Then what had happened is the city council conducted a work session where they went over that report in depth and discussed what, what and how they wanted to put items on the ballot. And then, once that was decided, then the city attorney drew up the actual ballot language. I want to call these, this election in January, so we have time to, to conduct those special meetings if the council desires.
Okay, that's where I was getting at, what the process would be with the, is that in the workshop, have you done that? It's kind of a joint thing between the council and the commission, or is it just council addressing the report and that, you know, their desired amendment language?
I believe, um, the, the last time, Austin, did you read that? I, I don't remember if it was both or just the council. Do, do you recall?
I think it was the council.
I think it was just the council, because at this point, it's up to the council to decide. They can decide that they don't want to put anything on there, or they, you know, or they could decide other things that they want as a, you know, in addition to what's been recommended, so.
I was reading through the, the agenda comments, it looks like the, the commission was appointed in July 20th. So you have six month, according to the charter, the six-month standing committee, so there's still time even with that report. That's why I didn't know if you wanted to have them, or to get the council, one of that, the commission involved. But, but sure, yeah, so mayor, I mean, next thing we'll do is, is just what Lori mentioned, publish the report and then, you know, depending on what kind of meetings you want to hold, Scott and/or I can, you know, can follow up with this, with, with the clarity and of the definition that you want on that, on that second clause. And then anything else, and then we'll put that, you know, to a workshop or whatever it is that you want to do.
In my opinion, I think this is the only real thing that, when I read the report and listening, kind of getting the feel from other council members chatting about this, that's really the only part of the report that we really should discuss. I don't think that's going to require an entire work session. So if it's possible for us to just, next meeting, to just have an agenda item about it and discuss it there, rather than having a whole different special session, that would be ideal. I think, I think based on what I'm hearing, we're, we're just looking for some clarification on the second part of the, that states resigns from municipal office, the person presently holds, and more clarification on how can we word that to allow that candidate, that office holder slash candidate to serve out the rest of their term and making their resignation effective at the end of their full term?
Okay, I got that, and that's, that's not a problem to do that.
Are there any other questions from council of Sherri and the, the charter recommendation?
I've got, I've got two more. On section 2.12, publication of ordinances, it was provided was taken out and required was inserted. Uh, about halfway down, it says, except as, as otherwise provided. Do you want to take provided and put required to be consistent? 2.2 halfway down.
Yeah.
I would say so.
Okay, that.
That's probably just an oversight.
Yeah, except as otherwise provided should be changed to accepted otherwise required. And then, um, in, in terms of, did we agree that if somebody's appointed, it does not count towards term limits, so we, oh, do we all agree with that concept as well?
It sounds like everybody was on board with that.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
And just, uh, so this would, this would be on the next election, which would be, would that be the next May election, Lori?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right, I'm looking for a motion. Uh, we are, we're, uh, the agenda item is to, uh, is resolution number 2020-48, uh, accepting the report. Can I have a motion?
Move that we approve resolution 2020-48.
Second.
Second.
Bobby with the second, James with the motion. Do I have any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Sherri, appreciate it.
Thank you, Sherri.
All right, can move on to item number two, consider resolution number, uh, 2020-49, designating a city representative as an alternate representative to the Houston Galveston area council's 2021 general assembly. Lori?
Uh, yes, mayor, this is just to appoint the, uh, representative and the alternate last, uh, 2020, uh, general assembly, uh, you served as the representative and Drew, uh, council member Lawson served as the alternate. This item is to appoint, um, those positions for the 2021 general assembly and also to bring to your attention that there will be a virtual meeting for those, uh, that appointee, uh, on November 12 via Zoom.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I have no problem stepping down. I'm a little busy, uh, and also my term limit, my term is up, coming up. So if anybody would like to step up and be the, uh, the designated representative, I'm, I'm open to that. Uh, my feelings will not be hurt, so, um, yeah, anybody interested in being the, the designated, um, representative? Or anybody?
I'm happy to do that. I thought reading it, you had designated Drew, though.
Uh, Drew's the alternate right now.
You have a representative and an alternate. That's in case that representative can't go.
I'm happy to.
I'm, I'm happy to remain as alternate. I think I have a, a conference of plan meeting on the 12th, so.
All right, so I'm hearing James, James would like to do that, be the, be the designated representative and Drew's okay with being the alternate?
Unless somebody else wants to.
Or if somebody else wants to be the alternate and participate in a, probably a super fun virtual meeting, uh, November, November 12. All right, um, sounds like it'll be James and Drew just looking for a motion, uh, with, uh, with that stated?
I move that.
I, uh, move that, I move that we, uh, pass, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash or approve resolution twenty twenty dash four nine, uh, naming uh, James Singleton as, uh, the representative to the general assembly and Drew Watson as the alternative uh, representative, uh, to the assembly.
I'll second.
I have a motion in the second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Move along to item, uh, F three, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash five zero, establishing new requirements related to committee membership, terms of office, office removal from office and vacancies, duties and responsibilities, quorum and voting and meeting procedures for the golf course advisory committee. Uh, Mr. Bassford?
Good evening, uh, mayor, council members. Um, yeah, this is just to, uh, refresh the, uh, committee description and outline a few of the terms, uh, moving forward, uh, with this, uh, agenda item. It's also running parallel to another one on this agenda. Um, kind of wanted to, uh, refresh the description of what it, what existed and add a few, uh, stipulations to membership moving forward, uh, with the projected growth of the golf course and its facilities potentially. Um, it's definitely important that we kind of refresh this and get in front of this and, and outline the duties moving forward.
Okay, what, what are some of the, is there any, what is the biggest, what are the changes that?
Right now, we added a stipulation, um, all residents, but we allowed you guys to, the, the council can make an exception for a non-resident to serve on the advisory committee. Uh, if the individual has exten- extensive golf experience or is an active stakeholder or participant in the golf club. Uh, we put some literature in there involving the, um, Jersey Meadow Golf Associations and someone's how we wanted to target, uh, members that serve not only as a resident, but, um, in one of those associations if possible. Um, the history, uh, shown below is very similar and also what we're going to do is we're going to stagger the terms uh, to ensure that terms are staggered and set. And, um, removal of office, office and vacancies did not change. Duties and responsibilities didn't change, uh, quorum and voting and meeting procedures didn't change. It was just more of adding, uh, more stipulations to the membership than, uh, refreshing it up.
Okay.
So we're going to get a report every quarter according to this new rule. Does that mean it's going to be an agenda item so that we would then discuss that report or, uh, and vote to whether to accept it or not?
Yes, it could be. Um, and it could, I think we put in here, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we put in here, um, twice, no less than twice per year or when requested by city council. Section five, last paragraph. Um, committee will present city council with a written report, no less than twice per year when requested by city council.
I thought I'd read somewhere it said quarterly. It's not, is that not the case?
Probably in the history documents because it used to be quarterly.
Okay.
That's in section two B of the bylaws. I think it's on page, page one. It says quarterly.
Oh, it's.
That's a, that was history, uh, history document. Uh, so that was previously, uh, they were doing quarterly, um, moving to twice a year or unless requested, uh, by council more often. So essentially, we could do more if you would like. So, yeah, his, historically, it was quarterly. Moving forward would be twice, no less than twice a year.
All right, so we're basically talking about, uh, adjusting, adjusting some of the rules to just, just in case we can't find a citizen that wants to participate that we can recruit from some of the, um, people who don't live in Jersey Villas, but they are active players that frequent the golf course and can provide, provide that feedback.
Yes, that is correct.
Any council members have any, uh, I, I, Bobby, you're the liaison and you've been a regular, regular attendee at the meetings. Does that sound like something that should, uh, should happen?
Yeah, when, when the, uh, committee was discussing the changes, um, they, they wanted to ensure that uh, persons who are appointed to the committee were people who were active participants on the golf course and, you know, were, were part of the community of the golfers there and, uh, and that's why they wanted uh, to, to give sort of first shot, uh, at, at membership to members in the current golf associations. And then, you know, barring that, uh, then, you know, of course, you kind of could open it up to the community at large. Um, you know, I think that that's how the committee is basically structured now. Most of the members are, uh, active, I think, in, in, uh, one of the organizations. Uh, so, you know, I would imagine that's, it's probably not going to change anything on a practical matter, but I, 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 I like the idea of giving a priority to, to people who are active golfers there and, and engaged in the community.
Okay, any other council members have questions, comments, concerns?
Looks like a great plan. If you're going to run a business, you would put priority on the customers of that business.
Agreed. All right, uh, with that, I'm looking for a motion on, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash five zero.
I'll make a move, we approve, uh, resolution number twenty twenty dash five zero.
Second.
All right, uh, any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, move on to item F four, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash five one, renaming the Rec- Recreation and Events Committee as the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, establishing new requirements related to committee membership, terms of office, removal from office and vacancies, duties and responsibilities, quorum and voting, and meeting procedures for the newly established Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and making committee appointments. Robert Bassford?
Yeah, so, uh, very similar to the, uh, golf course advisory committee, this is structured, uh, parallel. Um, moving from more of a rec and events focus to a more parks and recreation advisory committee with the opportunity to still be as hands-on as they desire. Um, with the, uh, implementation of, of a, of a master plan moving forward, you wanted to kind of circumvent and include parks and recreation as opposed to just uh, focusing in on recreation and events only. Uh, this won't change, um, from a practical standpoint as well. Uh, as you could see, we lined it up to where it would, uh, membership and so on and so forth. We kind of established more clean cut, uh, bylaws moving forward. Uh, there was no his- history of, of bylaws, so we wanted to create a, you know, a description of the committee to add to the website as well as duties and, um, outline some like, uh, meeting procedures and so on and so forth. Um, open to answer any questions with this one as well, of course.
Any council members have questions for Robert?
Just, just really quick, more out of curiosity, uh, one of these, it splits them into the seven, seven places for terms and, and there's four that serve a four-year term and, and three that serve a, you know, one year that renews next year, or maybe I have those numbers backwards, but, uh, were they chosen any which way or are, are there any places set for the Parks and Rec Committee?
Robert, if I may, I'll, I'll explain this one for you. Um, when I looked at this, there's the, there are already seven places and, um, the ones that are going to expire in a year are gonna expire in a year now. So it just was moved exactly like it is now. They'll expire in one year.
Okay, thanks, Lori.
All right, Robert, not to nitpick, but I guess I'll nitpick, uh, changing the name from, uh, Recreation and Advance to Parks and Recreation, uh, you know, it seems to me that the recreation is, uh, doesn't come near as much into play as events does. Uh, I'm not sure what recreation covers other than the events that we have. So I was wondering why it wouldn't be Parks and Events Advisory Committee instead of, or Parks Recreation and Events Committee? Uh, I, I just, if you're going to be exacting about the name so much that you have to change it here, why not just cover everything?
Uh, you, you could, you could Parks, Recreation and Events. Um, some municipalities, uh, see events as under the recreation side. Uh, usually Parks and Rec is split into two and events will fall under it. Uh, more recently, a very few, uh, municipalities have been outlining special events and events as its own, uh, division. Um, the reason why it was just Parks and Rec is because we have Parks and Recreation and, and, um, our city here and events falls under that as well as aquatics on the recreation side. Uh, recreation, uh, circumpuses almost everything beyond events too, um, whether it be, you know, our programs or so on and so forth, um, any type of program that we offer is falling under the recreation category.
Yeah, I think, I think events falls into recreation pretty, pretty well.
Yeah, the program.
I'm not going to push the issue because it's kind of petty, but it, it just seems that, you know, this will come up again if you don't get it right.
Well, and keep in mind, we're also offering a lot more recreation opportunities than we did in the past, so there are actually sporting leagues, there are, there are exercise classes, there's a ton of stuff. So I think this does more ac- much more accurately reflect the activity of the group.
Forget pickleball.
And pickleball.
All right, um, any other questions, comments, concerns? If not, I'm looking for a motion on the resolution.
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash five one.
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Mayor, who was that second?
Uh, James Singleton.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to move on to item, uh, F five, consider resolution number twenty twenty dash five two, appointing board members to the Board of Adjustment, uh, the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals and the Golf Course Advisory Committee. Lori?
Uh, yes, mayor. Uh, last month, we were unable to fill a couple vacancies. Uh, we do have the position one on the Board of Adjustment open. It's to fill an unexpired term. Um, currently, Nestor Minya, uh, has asked, he serves in, uh, position A one. He would like to move up into position one where he'll become a voting member. Also, um, Judy Tidwell currently, uh, serves in A two. She would like to move up into A one. That will give her the capability of being the first person appointed should a regular member, uh, not be able to attend. And then we do have two people that have, um, submitted their applications for consideration, Nelson Finney and Theo, Theopolis, Theopolis Woodard. That would be for the Board of Adjustment. Then on the Board, Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, we have also position one open that will be for, um, also the unexpired term, uh, excuse me, um, that will be for a, a new term that started October one and will end September twenty twenty-two. And there are, uh, two people interested, I believe, in that is Nestor. Um, Nestor Minya isn't interested. I'm sorry, there's three, Nestor Minya, um, Finney and Woodard. And then on the Golf Course Advisory Committee is position seven. And that is also for October twenty through September twenty twenty-two. And we have Diane Stock, who is the, would be a non-resident under the new rules. And, but she does serve on one of the associations. And then we have Kevin Ross. So this would be, uh, item is for discussion and then, uh, the council decides where they want to put, uh, each person if we can have a, a motion on the resolution appointing those people as discussed.
Lori, why don't I see Nestor Finney's application? Am I missing something?
Yes, sir. That came into this morning and it was emailed, um, in your email. You must have missed it. Did everybody else get it?
I got it.
Yes.
So it went out today?
It came in this morning, yes.
I'm not seeing it. I'm sorry. I don't have it.
Wait, which one are you missing?
He's missing Nest.
Nestor's came in on Wednesday, the fourteenth.
Yeah, but I think it just sent it out this morning.
This morning was, was the opposite.
I'm finding.
Oh, okay. You're. You're right. Sorry, I got mixed up there.
So just for, for clarification, the Board of Adjustments is a board that considers variances to the building code?
Okay, so the Board of Adjustments, they consider, um, specific variance requests such as setbacks, uh, of, of property being, um, is not exactly shaped right and they're having trouble with the setbacks. There'd be different things under the, um, under, I believe it's, uh, they also do signs, certain sections under the code where they can accept a, a variance. Um, the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, that board specifically looks at the codes under the building code, under the swimming pool code, under the electric code and those different codes. And anytime that there's going to be a change in those codes, they have to, that board has to meet and has to produce a recommendation to council concerning any changes to those codes. And then council ultimately will, uh, pass an ordinance, uh, in, uh, implementing the change. Under the Board of Adjustment, it's strictly off by itself, uh, the council doesn't get involved in those decisions. Any appeal from a Board of Adjustment goes directly to district court.
Okay. I know that the Building Board of Adjustment Appeal is a very technical, can be a very technical conversation when they're looking at codes, building codes and electrical codes and things like that. That does take a, a pretty extensive knowledge base, in my opinion, just FYI.
This might suggest.
Some of those members that serve on that board, uh, Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals are, are, uh, people who have a building background, who are a contractor, those type, those type people.
Okay, um, looking at, uh, well, I'm, I'm open to discussion. Let's start with that, with the Board of Adjustments. It sounds like we kind of have, we have a person who's an alternate A one, Nestor Mena, who wants to move from alternate one to position one and Judy Tidwell from alternate two to alternate one. Is anybody opposed to that?
No, that sounds good.
Okay, um, Lori, do we need a, a, up to appoint someone to alternate two, position alternate two then?
Yes.
Okay, so we ha- we do have out of the people who sent their, um, sent their applications in today, within, on, on Wednesday and, and today, um, we have.
Nelson Finney and Theopolis Woodard.
Right, so out of those two, I'm looking for council discussion on the two candidates and which one would be better placed in, uh, alternate, position alternate two. And if I could give my opinion, since everyone's jumping to speak at the same time, um, Theopola seems to be, uh, a more of a technical person. Um, looks like, um, as far as professional community activities, it seems to be a lot of, uh, telecom and utility, uh, work. Um, and so my opinion would be that person would probably be best, better suited for the Building Board of Adjustment role. Um, leaving, um, Mr.
Nelson Finney.
Mr. Finney, better suited for the Board of Adjustment, alternate two position. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I would agree with that.
Okay, so it looks like we're, we're, we seem to have an agreement on, uh, Board of Adjustments, moving Nestor Mena from alternate one to position one, uh, moving Judy Tidwell from alternate two to alternate one and appointing Nelson Feeny to, uh, alternate, position alternate two. And then in Building Board of Adjustment, uh, placing, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Woodard, uh, into that position. Sound okay? All right, and then so what we have left is, uh, Golf Course Advisory Committee. There are two candidates, um, that have applied. Um, we have a person who is a resident, that's Kevin Ross. A lot of us know him. Uh, he played, he also plays a lot of golf at Jersey Meadow. Uh, and then we also have, um, Diane, uh, who is, uh, very involved in the golf course and serves on one of the player committees. Um, both very good candidates in my opinion. So I'm very happy to, it's, it'll be a tough decision, but, um,
Well, I think under the new rules we just adopted, it's actually a very easy decision. I think we're actually required, where I, I think we're actually because even though she, uh, uh, and I'm sorry, this was kind of a, um, I'm sorry, what was her name? Um?
Diane Stock.
Thank you. Uh, Diane Stock, although she is a member of, uh, one of the golf associations and she's not a city resident, I think under the new rules, uh, city resident, even if they're not a golf association member would take precedent, precedence over.
So it sounds like Kevin Ross would be plugged into that, to that position. Um, I think that about does it. If anyone has any comments, questions, concerns, and if not, I'm looking for a motion to place the candidates into the positions as discussed.
I'll make that motion to place those candidates into the positions as discussed.
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Say nay. Any extensions? Motion carries. That will move us into, keep closing my screen.
Five or six.
I don't know. I gotta get to it. Come on. Okay. Item F six, consider resolution number 2020 dash fifty-three, authorizing the city manager to enter into an emergency debris removal pre-vent contract with Ashbrit Incorporated, Austin Lee City Manager.
Um, so recently our post, post-storm debris removal contract with Ashbrit has expired. We've utilized the HGAC buy board to obtain quotes for debris and removals. FEMA does require that we get, uh, one other, or one additional quote from a company that has not responded to the HGAC, uh, proposal. So we did that as well. So we stay in compliance with FEMA, which is definitely vital for when we seek reimbursement of these services. But after reviewing the pricing sheets and the company information, that we continue to utilize Ashbrit for our post-storm re-removal services. We've worked with them since 2008. They're very easy to work with. They, they understand our processes. Uh, Isabel and them work great together when it comes to the financial side and like making sure we get, uh, the most reimbursement we can for that. So, uh, the motion, recommended motion would be to authorize the city manager to enter into the contract.
All right. Any questions of, uh, Austin?
I think it's a good idea. If you've got a good relationship with them, keep it going.
I agree. With that, looking for a motion.
I move we approve resolution number 2020 dash fifty-three.
Hey, yeah, my screen changed. I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Mayor, I didn't get that second.
Uh, that was James Singleton.
Thank you.
Yep. And that moves us into mayor and council comments. Um, I'm going to start with council member Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll try to make this brief, but first thanks to the charter committee for their, uh, for their assistance and, uh, committee work. You know, we always say we look for volunteers and there were 10 people there that, uh, we got to choose and they put in a lot of hours to make some recommendations. Uh, congratulations to Lieutenant Keel. Um, the Parks Master Plan is going, needs, uh, to be filled out. So if you're a citizen looking for something to do, go to the city website and look for that. Um, and, uh, also go vote if you haven't already. Um, there's an election going on. So happy Halloween, everyone.
Thank you, Drew. Uh, let's see, Bobby?
Um, I would also echo Drew's sentiment regarding voting. Uh, my, my understanding is people have been, even though the first day, uh, at, at the Civic Center had been super busy. It sounds like, uh, lines have been moving very quickly since then, based on everyone I've talked to. Uh, the other thing I did want to say, and it's kind of related back to the appointments we just made, uh, one little detail that we, we, uh, didn't point out was, uh, that the reason position one on the Board of Adjustment was vacant, uh, was due to the recent passing of Henry Hermes, who served in that position since 1995. So, uh, served the city for 25 years in that position. Uh, I, I'd met him once or twice. Um, really that experience and, and, and his contribution to the community, uh, is, is just a, a big loss. And, and I'm, uh, I know that his loss or his, his, uh, death is a loss for the community as a whole. And so, uh, I pray for his family and, uh, and, and hope that they find some solace at this time.
Thank you, Bobby. Uh, Gary, you have any comments?
I have voted. But Greg's gonna go cancel my vote. Anyway, uh, yeah, I would second all those. Thanks. And, um, uh, commendation to Henry Hermes posthumously for his service to, to his community. And that's it.
All right. Uh, Greg?
Uh, Mayor, I've got nothing.
Okay. James?
Thank you, Bobby, for bringing that up. Um, appreciate his service and I think of his family. Congratulations, Lieutenant Keel. And now is the time to go vote. Early voting, like I saw, first day is always, it's like the worst day to go voting. It's, unless you're going to vote on election day, but early voting is the way to go. Right now attendance is going to be real low. Get out, go vote. Last week is always a ramp up into busyness. So get out and go vote.
Thank you, James. Uh, yeah, I guess, uh, just wanted to say, uh, congratulations to, uh, Lieutenant Keel. Um, the, I, I, I read the post, did a fantastic job and definitely earned, earned this honor. Um, want to thank, uh, the Charter Review Committee, all those folks for stepping up and giving us some recommendations. I think they were all uh, well-intentioned and well-placed. And it was great to have that discussion last, last month, um, uh, where they heard kind of what some of our thoughts were. Um, and I hope that serving on that committee is a springboard to other things. Now that you, uh, kind of got to go down into the weeds of how the city really works and got to get your hands dirty in the constitution essentially of the city. Um, and, uh, congratulations to all the people who were appointed to positions today. Thank you very much for being willing to volunteer. Um, my condolences to the Hermes fa, family and thank you very much for the 25 years of service to the city. Um, it's great to have people who have so much expertise. That's really why we are the city that we are. There's a lot of people who, um, are just plugged into their field and they give of their time and professionalism to the city to volunteer and make sure that we're going in the right direction. And I've had a couple of examples of that this week with citizens emailing me about various grant opportunities. And, um, it's always great when people, um, that are in professional positions, they, they, they reach out to the city when they see an opportunity for us to save money. Um, I think that was about it. Yeah, go vote. Um, it's going to be, uh, yeah, it's, it's always crazy at the very beginning, but now I got in and out. I, I avoided day one and two and three, and I went on day four and I was in and out. I think the longest part that took was the actual voting. The turning of the wheel took the longest time. So, um, everyone down there is doing a fantastic job. Um, they always do. Um, yeah, with that, uh, with, uh, if there's anything else, we're going to go.